Any comments? So I'll read the guidelines for addressing the Board of Education. Welcome to this meeting of the School District Amy Board of Education. We are pleased that you're interested in the work of the school board. You may address the board only during community comments time on the board meeting agenda. Any resident, district employee, or guest invited by the board may make comments about any decision, policy, or board meeting agenda items. The following guidelines have been established for addressing the Amy Board of Education. For those wishing to speak before the board, a sign up sheet will be available prior to the start of the meeting. If the topic noted on the sign up sheet deemed out of order, the presiding board member will inform the person wishing to speak prior to the start of the meeting. Community comments must pertain to a board decision, policy, or board meeting agenda item. Comment time is limited to five minutes per person. However, the time may be increased or decreased at the discretion of the presiding board member. Political speeches which are not materially related to board decisions, policies adopted by the board, or are not about a board meeting agenda item are strictly forbidden. Personal criticism of members of the Board of Education or employees of the school district are also strictly forbidden. Please stand to be recognized. After being recognized, state your name and municipality where you live for the record. The board normally receives a citizen input and does not respond or debate. If there is a need for an answer or response to a concern or issue, the district administrator or one of the other administrators will get back to you with a response. If your concern requires board action, it may be placed on the agenda of a future board meeting. And we'll go with Clementine, please.
Dear school members, my name is Clementine Seva. I'm an exchange student from France currently studying in Amory High School. And I'm here to talk about the graduation 2023. So I came to the United States as an exchange student looking for a real American teenager experience. I wanted to know what it looks like to live here for a few months because we talk a lot in France about what an American life could look like. And so while coming here, I was looking for a few things to experience at school. So such as homecoming, understanding the school's spirit, and joining the sport, for example. And I did experience all those things. But participating in the graduation is also something that I was looking for while coming here. Because in France, it's an event that we talk a lot about, and I think it's really important for American teenagers. Because I think that it represents a lot, and it's like the last thing that all the seniors experience altogether before going their separate ways. So I'm not asking for an American diploma. Don't want an American diploma, but I just want to participate in the graduation, which means the ceremony, the walk, and the rehearsals. And I know that because I'm an exchange student, I might not have all the requirements to participate in the graduation, like to get a diploma. But again, I'm not asking for a diploma. And if I'm here today in the United States, it's because I worked hard in France. I worked a lot to have good grades and to get my French diploma. And I still work hard here to have good grades and to maintain those grades. So during the first and second terms, so the first semester, I had a GPA of 4.0. Besides, I'm involved in the high school activities. I was involved in, and in the playing fall. I'm currently a forensic and jazz choir. And I'm thinking about getting involved in soccer during spring. And so all these activities help me having friends and creating memories with them. But at the end of the school year, I will have to go back in France. And I think that the graduation is probably the last time I will see all these people, and I will experience one last thing with my schoolmates who became today my friends. And I think it would be a very powerful and memorable moment for me, but also for my friends to participate in the graduation. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Justin.
Not a bad speech for a third language, right?
Yeah.
First off, board members, administrators, I want to thank you guys. You guys do a phenomenal job here within the school. Board, I really appreciate the policies that you guys create and enact and put into place to help our whole community. One such policy is the transgender policy, which I specifically really appreciate. I appreciate the way that you guys have looked out for parental rights, as well as the protection of children, and looking at everybody that's attending your school. This policy was very well thought out, and I think accurately addresses the concerns and desires of the families living in the Amory area. However, sometimes there's policies that I don't quite understand. I don't quite know what's going on behind the scenes. And so when I learn of these policies, I sometimes ask the question, why is Amory's policy different than other schools? Or why don't we have a policy regarding a particular situation? I evaluate whether we should make any changes or any suggestions. And I have one that I wanted to bring for you to consider. A policy that I think has been left out, maybe left up to individual discretion, a policy that impacts the purpose and responsibility of the board itself. I'd like to introduce you a policy that New Richmond uses, a policy that's used by Baldwin, a policy that's used by Osceola and Hudson, a policy that regards the treatment of foreign exchange students and participation of graduation. Currently, we have a whole policy, 422.1, that addresses the details of how foreign exchange students are to work within the school. Limits in terms of the number of students that are allowed to come, how they're supposed to participate, what sort of things and activities are to have, even insurances that the students are to carry. However, there's nothing in there that addresses graduation. So then we're to let, to go back to policy number 345.5, which is the details about graduation. And in that policy, there's also nothing about graduating foreign exchange students. So while doing some digging in the middle of this, I've kind of found a couple of responses that have come back to me. One of them is we just haven't done it that way before in terms of graduating and letting this foreign exchange students participate in graduation. Kind of comes across a little bit more of an excuse. I've also heard that it doesn't seem fair for the participation of foreign exchange students when other students are not able to participate. I don't think we need to lump foreign exchange students into the derelict category that some underperforming students fall into. I think it's unfair for us to take away from the foreign exchange students over some other student squandering their opportunity to graduate. So I wanted to give you some opportunities to think about this and to take a look at this. Now, I believe that our foreign exchange students are absolutely brilliant. I think if you take a look at what they're able to do and able to perform, I think that they actually excel beyond what any transfer student has actually accomplished in our local area in the most recent years. Now, that doesn't mean that the transfer students are bad by any stretch of the imagination. But my neighbor who moved in next to me last year is able to walk and participate and do all the graduation stuff and even get his diploma, even though he's not getting the grades that our young Clementine is getting over here. Now, I'm not, again, advocating for the issuing of a diploma. That is, again, is up to the school board in terms of one of the responsibilities that you're mandated by the state to do. You also have a list of things that have to be done in order to receive a diploma. But I want to give you a couple of reasons why I think foreign exchange students should be included in graduation. First, the students that attend the schools here recognize that the schools that they attended back home were more academically challenging than the ones here in Amory. There's a small joke actually among some of the high performing students that says, ah, school is easy, I don't have to do anything. And the foreign exchange students kind of get that joke too. Currently, the GPA of these students is actually about a 3.9 commutative. Their grades and performance in these American schools is actually used for their addition into universities in their home countries. So there is something that they have on the line in this process. They actually had to achieve certain standards before they could come here and actually begin to participate in the exchange program. And according to our graduation requirements, even the ones listed in 345.5, you can actually see that if you go back and look at their old transcripts, they've met all of those requirements. But again, we're not talking about a diploma here. We're just asking about them to participate. These students come here and they share with us their language, their culture, and all these wonderful things. They help us to grow in the process. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but most of these students actually spend $12,000 to $15,000 to participate in a program like they're participating in here. And correct me if I'm wrong, I might be wrong on this, we do receive some funding in the census count for the participation of these foreign exchange students in our programs here at school. So I'd like to give you an addition maybe to a policy, maybe a correction, or maybe a chance to consider the policy 422.1. And I'd like to offer this as a proposed policy change. That exchange students who maintain a GPA of a 3.3, which is a B+ or higher, who participate in at least two extracurricular activities and have no disciplinary action brought against them with merit, they should be allowed to participate in graduation. That puts some onus on them to want to participate and actually belong to the school. These standards are far higher than the standards that are set for transfer students or any other student in the Amory School District. If they're able to meet these requirements, it actually marks them as a model example for what an Amory student should be. Again, Baldwin, Osceola, New Richmond, and many others allow these students to participate in graduation. I don't see why Amory shouldn't. I would ask that you please include this in your next discussion in closed session or an open session in the following months. Again, that article is 422.1. Thank you.
Justin, I have a, I do have just one question. Just so that we can clarify this, if we will be talking about this further, is that what you just said participate in graduation? And I just want to know what your expectation of what participate in graduation means?
Everything except a diploma.
So all of the events leading up to, all of the checklist that has to happen, and then walking across the stage?
Robbing gown.
Walking with the class, robing gown, okay.
Yep. I know that on their senior night, that they actually get a thank you letter from staff and teachers and stuff like that from what they've done. And I think that maybe even an official one from the board thanking them for their involvement. I know it's something that we haven't done in the past, but I think it's something that we ought to take a look at again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yep.
Sean, can you put that on the agenda for next month?
If that's something that Keek wants to do, because by policy, there's only two individuals that put items on the agenda, it would be Keek and myself. But we can have that conversation when we determine the agenda for next month.
Yep, okay.
Noted.
All right, next we'll go to our administrative reports.
I was wondering if you're gonna be able to get through.
It got stuck on the photos up there.
Yeah.
Where are the cards though?
I'm just gonna throw this out there because Tom's gonna make fun of me. My don, I was having a bad hair day.
Don't give Tom the credit for that.
There's a sweet hair.
All right, over Christmas break, Mrs. Kurtzels and her family were connected with the American Red Cross, and they did an extra blood drive. We always do on an April with our National Honor Society. They reached out to us because of a short, massive shortage of blood. And we knew, Yvonne told them, we don't know what kind of turnout we'll get, but we did it anyways. Yvonne and her family put in a lot of time, and we got enough staff that came in, and so it was a worthwhile event. And so some of the money that goes in that will go to the, there's a Red Cross scholarship that we do every year. So there's a little bit of extra money that'll go into a senior scholarship there.
Do you know how many units they collected?
I don't, I don't. We have high school honors band on January 9th, and we have the end of the first semester rapidly coming up. Although the updates are rather short, I don't want to give you the impression that there hasn't been a lot going on. It's been school, school, and sports and stuff, and very busy as always. Future events, the end of January, we've got our winter spirit week, January 30 through February 4th, kept up with the dance. January 30th always sneaks up on us freshman registration night. I've already had a number of eighth grade parents talk to me and say, it is not possible my son or daughter is going into high school. It's a scary event. And for me, it's my youngest, which has got to make a lot of you feel pretty old. February 13th to 16th, parent teacher conferences. Our focus will be on course selection for next year's courses. And then in February, we're planning on doing extra English and math practice and warrior time in preparation for our upcoming state tests.
Is that every grade level?
Nine through 11.
Okay.
Seniors will be in there, and hopefully they'll add some of their knowledge and expertise to the conversations to help the underclassmen.
All right, at the middle school, a lot going on. Girls' basketball and wrestling are underway. And Larry and Casey Doten are coaching the girls' basketball, some in eighth grade, and Mike Ingham has been our wrestling coach for many years, and they're doing a nice job. Kids are up to a great start, having some success. Prairie Fire Theater just happened last weekend. I don't know if you did that. Her son was one of the lead.
Jack.
He was Jack and Jack in the moon stock.
That was a lot of pressure for us parents. I told him no more lead roles.
And it was a very nice performance, and I saw many people there. And I said, I think it's my 24th Prairie Fire play I've seen. I've seen all of them like three or four times now. But there was over 70 students, and they did a really nice job. And I want to thank Tracy Hendrickson, who puts in countless hours getting that organized. We have 25 students from the middle school participating this Thursday in an honors choir at UW O'Clare, and that's being run by Mrs. Moscow. Josh just mentioned freshman registration night, and we have some activities coming up next week. Kids will be meeting with Mrs. Kurtzle and Mrs. Gangee and Mrs. Weizenbeck, and they'll be getting some instruction about setting up high school classes. And then they actually go over and tour some of the applied arts areas and the tech ed areas and what have you during the day. And then next, a week, on the 30th, the following Monday then, January 30th, is freshman registration night for eighth grade. And it's really interesting seeing how all of a sudden the high school kids, the eighth grade kids are all of a sudden get pretty excited about all the things that they can do at the high school, which is cool. Gifted and Talented Quiz Bowl, we will be starting in a few weeks through sixth grade, the Gifted and Talented Quiz Bowl, and Haley DeLeone is courting that for us. It's about a six-week activity. Genius Hour launches on February 8th, and we're once again decided to continue with Genius Hour. We were considering doing a different big PBL project with the kids, but we're going to continue with Genius Hour this year, and then maybe take a look at doing some alternative programming the following year.
Do you have the date of when the expo is gonna be?
Yeah, I do. It is.
The first Friday in May?
It's in May, but it's a Friday. I don't think, it might be the 13th, maybe? I can look that up and get it to you though.
I just like to have my calendar early.
Yeah, so the expo would be, I think it's the 13th. I think it's the second Friday, but I might be wrong. But our committee there, Tammy Milberg, Brenda Crowes, Mariah Off, Alan Carlson, and Larry Doten are working on that for our school, and we will launch that with all the kids on February 8th. Mrs. McCall and Mrs. Kostonik are starting a fun activity. We're always looking for things to do for kids to keep them busy, and maybe they're not in sports or a lot of other activities. So we're starting a snowshoe club, and it will run four sessions. And it's just teaching them how to snowshoe. We provide the snowshoes, treats, cocoa, and get them out on our trails. Hopefully, they're still there with the rain. But they'll be out snowshoeing. And the nice thing is they're offering it to a lot of the middle school kids, plus any staff that want to join to get out and exercise. I probably should do that. But it's kind of a cool thing. I used to do quite a bit of that, and we're bringing it back, so I was really excited for that. Upcoming dates, our last day of the term is this Friday, or Thursday, sorry. In-service the following day here. We're gonna be working on this, the project based learning a lot on teaching the staff exactly what we're expecting this year with Genius Hour. And then we have a lot of state testing materials to go over with staff on our schedules. We have a district-wide technology meeting coming up soon, and we'll be taking a look at our devices and the display screens and all of the different technology pieces that are used to instruct students. And so that would be good to get everyone talking about how things are going. February 3rd, we have a Warrior Way celebration and a reward day for students, which should be exciting. Solo ensemble contest coming up on February 9th. Parent-teacher conferences coming up, middle school, we will be running those in the exact same fashion where parents can sign up to come in in person, or they can do them remotely. They will be getting a link to sign up very soon. And I think we'll be sending those out probably district-wide together. And so a lot of things going on. That brings us to the middle of February at the middle school. Do I have any questions? All right.
Good evening. Our first, or actually our trimester Warrior Way Rally took place on January 6th. Three high school students came over and spent about an hour with us in front of our entire student body and led conversation with our students on empathy and friendships and leadership. So I want to thank Lucci Azapira, Sophia Danielson, and Hunter Beadsey. We even had the opportunity for our intermediate school students to ask questions, and our students really look up to high school kids. And so I think for them to come and speak about what being a warrior and what being a friend and a leader is, really means a lot to them, and I think they really internalize it. So thank you, Josh, for allowing them to come over and spend time with us. Our English Language Arts adoption is continuing. Next week, Teresa Stanley will come here from CISA 11. She's a reading consultant. She guided us on our adoption process. She's going to spend a half day with each grade level. She did that in the fall, and so circling back and doing it with us in the winter, we're gonna look at our pacing, our scope and sequence, our assessments, and then alignment with our essential standards. Fast bridge testing happened for us last week. It went on without a hitch, and we are now looking at the results of that. The results of that assessment drive our Tier Two and our Tier Three instruction. So we look at scores and we develop what sorts of academic supports do students need based on those results. In addition to what Tom said about the Prairie Fire Children's Theater, grades three through six, students had an opportunity to sign up for a workshop here. It took place here, so the two leaders of Prairie Fire came and spent one hour with each of those grade levels, and there was a variety of different topics that they could work on, so improv, acting, and it was very well attended. It's always something that students really look forward to, and that happens in the week when that staff is here already. We had a winter break reading incentive that went home over Christmas break. So on Wednesday, myself, Mrs. Brighton, and Mrs. Colzer will be celebrating with over 75 students that completed two and a half hours of reading over Christmas break. And then finally, we celebrated outstanding attendance, and we had over 140 students that received attendance awards for missing three days or less thus far in the year. So some upcoming events that Tom and Josh did not share is on January 28th, we have our IPO Winter Ball. And then on February 21st, we have Love Your Library Night. We had that last year, so this is our second annual Love Your Library event. So during that time, we'll have books set out, we'll have cookies and cocoa. Parents can come with their children, read books, look through the variety of books that we have, and hopefully find some high interest readers for their children. And then finally, on February 28th, we will have our IPO Family Bingo Night that takes place. Do you have any questions?
Hello. In the elementary school, we have some fun things going on as well. We have our reading incentive kickoff that started on January 9th, which is the discovery of reading. Mrs. Schu and the reading committee put together a fun activity night for our families, which we had 65 students and parents at this fun kickoff. Mrs. Peterson also in Fayette kicked off our American Heart Association's challenge with our kids, so they are really excited about that. She is very energized over the finding of the first golden egg in their mystery gift, so she's just having a great time with that. One of the other things that happened for us before break was Josh was willing to share his high school choir with us, and they came in saying to our students within the hallways right before break, so that was very well welcomed. And again, students just look up to those kiddos coming in and sharing their talents with us, so we appreciate that. Fast bridge assessments coming up this week. We're working on that, so that's just an extension of what they've been talking about. Excuse me. Prairie Fire Theater as well included our third grade Montessori students, so they just have a wonderful time doing that, and were able to come over too for that actor's class here at the intermediate school. Arlene Elementary collected food items during the month of December, supported our local food shelf, gave 123 pounds of food to the Amory Food Pantry, so that was exciting, and they're very proud of that. As well, they were collecting change in the Salvation Army bucket, which totaled up to $142.23, gave them 14 characters on their winter scene, so that was another exciting thing for them. Our second grade kindness club connected with Mrs. Larson's FACE students to make some hats. They get to make one to keep, make one to give away, and they supply Grace Place with some new hats as well. So that was a fun activity. So again, thank you to the high school students for coming over and spending time with our lean elementary kiddos. And then our referendum continues. So that's still a really super exciting thing. I've been sharing some of the bounded book pictures with the staff, and they're just getting excited about that. It's fun to be able to see that, and once it's bounded in a book, it seems more real and exciting, so we're happy about that. Some of our upcoming events, we have in-service, we have our HMH training along with the intermediate school, the youth recreation fair, and just our typical no schools and conferences like the others. So, thank you.
All right, beginning in the world of people services and special education, probably to start off, the most widely known facet of special ed is probably the IEP. If you haven't heard anything about special education, you may have heard about individualized education plans. So just to kind of check to be well on where we're at with IEP meetings in the district. I pulled a report the other day, we have to this point had 141 meetings held at this point in the year, and we're just a little over halfway. So we're gonna have, you know, probably closer to 300 meetings this year than not. So these are held annually to determine services for students and eligibility. Some of those would be revision, some of those will be to consider dismissal based on a lot of those assessments that were mentioned earlier along the line here, fast bridge and four, we're in another district-wide ACT, aspire, and those things. So highlight that, considering that a IEP might be 10, 12 pages at minimum, we're talking about 1,600 pages of paperwork that has already been generated halfway through the year. And, you know, if an IEP meeting would be an average of an hour, 141 hours already committed to this project. So just thought those are some interesting numbers to share, and just really want to laud and thank our special education case managers. It's a major part of the job. Eighty percent of these meetings or more are done after the school day or before the school day. So I just like to recognize that occasionally of that work that's being done throughout the district. Thank you.
I have a question, Brett. Do, is, does a student usually just have one IEP meeting in a year, or do they sometimes have more than one?
It could be. Really, it's case by case. But most of the time, it's at least, of course, it's required to have one. But we have, there's some case managers that may have five, six, not unheard of, have potentially 10 meetings in a year.
Okay.
Thank you. As far as training update, we've got a couple of teachers attending a behavior choices and executive functioning skills training at CISA 11. These are good events. I always like to support CISA and communicate what they're doing, especially when they're really relevant, behavior trainings for our teachers. Over the last few years, in light of COVID, we've seen, you know, just by observation, an increase in some of the intensity behaviors, particularly in our small, in our younger learners, potentially just children that haven't had as much of that interaction time, that socialization happening due to COVID. And so these are really nice trainings that are being offered through CISA to help address, you know, our learning and our staff's learning of new ways to support students. And then next, first aid CPR rescue training. This is an ongoing effort, but certainly in light of Damar Hamilton, the girls' player who had a heart attack. It's causing everyone to kind of relook at their training needs and their readiness in terms of responding to emergencies. So that's certainly the case with us, and having conversations with the school nurse, some of our secretarial staff and health aides, just in kind of relooking at how we're tracking training, making sure that we're adequately training enough staff and kind of trying to strike a balance between things that are happening in the building, between sports and extracurricular activities, making sure the staff know where our AED devices are, that they're pretty familiar with how to operate those potentially. So this is just important work, so I'd like to thank our nurse and the health aides and secretarial staff that are kind of helping to just kind of reinvigorate those processes. And then finally, this is kind of the year, every few years, we collaborate with Berth to Three and Head Start to look at interagency agreements and memorandums of understanding for Berth to Three. So these are very little, little, littlest learners. By three, we need to determine when the county has identified them as potentially a student with a disability. By three, we need to determine when the county has identified them as potentially a student with a disability, determine that, and make them eligible for that prior to their birth date. It's a pretty complex process. There's a timeline involved. There's multiple people to communicate with, whether that's the Head Start case manager, the parents, the school, transportation, all those sorts of things. So it helps to have a common name with these documents. So we've held the one for St. Croix. Of course, Hope County is where the majority of our girls come from Birth to Three. So we'll be meeting with Hope County next month to look at the interagency agreement there.
What, I have one more question. What Head Start or what facility do we refer kids to if they're eligible for Head Start?
There's one up in Balsam Lake.
Okay.
Yep. And I don't know if there are any others, but I'm pretty sure that that's where the offices.
Okay. Well, there's lots of Head Starts in CISA eleven, but that's the one that we utilize for this district. Okay. Thanks.
Do we have an AED in every building, Brad?
We do.
Two at the high school.
And at athletic facilities as well.
There's one up the concession stand that's accessible for the track and the baseball field. And Jordinson has one as well.
Okay. Cool.
Good. I was thinking about that, actually. Pass the voice.
Yep. Okay. You have anything?
I do not.
Okay. Well, then, I guess we'll go to John.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving me the time to just give you my kind of some updates here. So it last year was the end of COVID-era programming for school nutrition. So unfortunately, reporting that I'm going to do from last year is going to look great, but don't hold me to it for next year. That's what I'm trying to say. So by the numbers, so last year is just kind of impressive when you kind of break it down. So we served roughly three hundred and fourteen thousand total meals in the hundred and eighty-one student contact days, which netted about seventeen hundred and thirty-four a day on average, which is pretty good. Our benchmark, one of the two benchmarks that we use in school nutrition is ADP, or Average Daily Participation, which just gives us how many kids are actually eating our student meals. So last year, breakfast was about fifty-one percent, lunch was about seventy-three. So pretty good. Most schools in CISA eleven are right around there. Some for lunch are about, or are still in the sixties as well. Currently this year, again, we are return to paid meals. So you'll notice that our ADP has fallen off by about three percentage points as a result of that. The good news is it's just three percent. Most of the other schools are about five to six percent fall off on that. The reason why ours has not fallen off that much is if we go to the next slide here, is because our free and reduced number has actually increased this year. So we had about a one to three percent increase per school. Lean Elementary is still over fifty-one percent. The reason why that's a good benchmark number for us is because that qualifies as district-wide for a lot of additional USDA funding and that sort of thing. So it's kind of a weird thing saying you hope you're over fifty percent because it means there's a lot more families struggling. But as a district, it means our financial things for Fund Fifty are going to be better. The high school fell off a little bit, was actually a little bit of a decrease this year. So then if we go to the next slide, so this is the other benchmark that we use, which is our PLE tool. This tool is essentially just what our fund balance is. And we are unable to adjust meal prices so long as that number is essentially going up. So if you look, there was a quite significant jump, almost two hundred thousand dollars from 2021 to 2022. The reasoning for that is it was a static reimbursement rate per student, and all students were included for the better part of two years. So now we're back to normal USDA reimbursement rates only for those kids who actually need them. So because of this, unfortunately, I don't think for the next school year we will be able to increase our prices, which is not fun just simply because the price of food is going up, commodity products are going up. So it's kind of a if you do or if you don't type of a thing. So we'll probably be addressing that earlier this summer when I come back to you asking for a price increase that's in defiance of the PLE tool if we can do that. So. So a couple of department updates. High school had the most updates so far this year. We, with the equipment that you guys approved to purchase of last spring, all of that has been installed. It was all installed by the skin of our knuckles the first week of school. But everything worked out swell. We moved the à la carte snacks by request of the ID team and the special ed team. They came to me in August and asked if their students could take more of an active role in helping out my team. So we actually moved à la carte out from our general lunch line and gave them their own store in the high school cafeteria. So Brad's team in that building had been running us for that, and it's been great. We love having them. I think a lot of students are taking a lot out of it. So that's been great. We also hired.
John, can I just interrupt you a second? I just need to point out that this new equipment, if there's a better school lunch out there, I would be shocked. I'm a little biased to our high school staff.
Our mic's a kind of weird tonight. I don't know.
But the made-from-scratch foods that the staff is putting together, I mean, we've even got more teachers now that are coming back around like this is too good to pass up. And I just, major kudos. It has been so great to see all the healthy, good food options. It's been great.
The chief complaint I get from Darcy, the lead in that kitchen, is every day she goes, why did I sign up for this? But then every time, she gets compliments from everything. And it's her doing it. She's the one who's driving it, so I don't let her complain too much. But thank you for that, Josh. So the middle school, we are actually returning a second hot lunch option, which got removed approximately four or five years ago. So that'll be starting this week if it hasn't already started. The Intermediate School has been kind of business as usual with some new equipment, which has been great. The Elementary School, all grade levels except for K are now eating meals in the cafeteria. Round of applause to Paula for that one. We also approved new equipment there that's working great. And we have a new team member, Tracy Perkins, who has added to the team who's been doing wonderful. So the next slide is just kind of future plans. So this is something I kind of presented to you guys last year. And in the red is kind of my update. So we are, my goal for the first year was twenty-five percent scratch cooking. And we are successfully doing that now across most of the schools. As far as local purchasing is concerned, we're achieving even that fifteen percent by buying ground beef from Brandon Bruder. So Lindsay Bruder, a teacher here at the Intermediate School, they have a little farm. And I've been buying all of our ground beef from them this year, which has been fantastic. Breakfast participation has taken a bit of a hit this year, but lunch is at seventy percent, which is what we want to see. We are all in process of doing farm-to-school grants. And the district garden, which if we can ever actually have a non-snow day during our school farm meeting, that'd be great. So next, in the next twelve months, we're hoping to increase our scratch cooking, a little bit more local purchasing, which of course now are moved from proteins to produce, which is very hard in Wisconsin in the middle of February to find locally sourced fresh produce. We're looking to increase our participation and start to use some of the vegetables that we grow. The last couple of slides here are just some fun pictures. The team has gotten pretty creative this year so far. And they've started to participate a lot more in holidays and that sort of thing. And they've been putting out some pretty good meals as well. So I figured I would just include those in there with everybody. And the rat is not real.
No, but it looks like he nibbled the apple.
That'd be one of the teachers, or one of the staff in that building, I think, actually might have rat teeth, I suppose.
That's funny. So I know that our percentage of free and reduced numbers affected whether we could provide free meals for our summer lunch program.
Correct.
Did we hit that?
We will. Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah. So that one is one where the US Department of Agriculture allows us to use our highest aggregate percentage for the district wide, and so long as one of the schools that are participating in summer school is over fifty percent, so fifty-one percent, then the entire district qualifies. So at this rate, at this point, I do believe summer feeding program will be back. And it's tied to the education because I know, well, I guess Elementary won't be really affected this summer anyway.
Okay. So it'll be for summer school, and then even, there are some weeks that they offer, even if summer school's not in session.
Yep. Yep. It's all weeks, all weeks when human beings are present in the building.
And is that only for one year, or is that like a certain?
That's actually just summer to summer to summer. So that started about.
You have to hit that number every year.
Yep. So that's a six-year contract that was signed with us in the US Department of Agriculture or with the DPI, I think, two years before I started here. And so it's just something that kind of comes up, and you still have to qualify, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Good. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And now we'll move on to our informational items, and we'll bring up.
I don't know what, I don't even know what mic is.
Don't touch nothing.
Not me. Yes, you're up.
Yep. Go ahead.
I bring to you John Hunick and Gary Ziff Cole. They are not wearing a fancy suit or a bikini tie. No. That's not in your, right in your wheelhouse, I don't think.
Well, good. Well, thank you, well, Chair Anderson, members of the board, and administration. We're here to talk about the bidding process and the GMP process. I'll get us kicked off, and we can go to the next slide. And Gary, Gary did most of the hard work. The project review, we won't go through a lot of that. I think late last year, if you remember, Troy Miller with LHB was here and talked about what you're doing at the high school, at the Science Media Center area, the commons and the cafeteria improvements, and then mechanical, electrical, throughout the whole building. So there's a lot of work going on. So we won't spend a lot of time on that. I'm going to let the cat out of the bag and say congratulations. Gary will talk about it, but the first big bid package is under budget. So that was good news. There was a lot of hard work with LHB and their engineers, with George and with Sean, and making really big decisions before the drawings went out in the street. So a lot of work behind the scenes with everybody for a successful bid day. The next slide, again, just a little bit more of an update. I think you've seen that many times in the past of what's happening in your building. From there, I'll let Gary talk about all the bidding.
The bidding process and creating the GMP. So this last month, we were out on the street with the bid documents. We had sixty competitive, over sixty competitive bids in all the trade categories. And then in that, the last two weeks, we've spent interviewing all the apparent little bidders. We call it scoping, their work to just to make sure that they've, they're covering everything, all the intentions of the bid documents. And then everyone's kind of on the same page as we enter into contracts. A guaranteed maximum price, a packet, a GMP packet is being created, and will be presented to Sean in a bound, in a bound copy, so that'll be official. And that will include in that detail all the plans, all the contractors that we're going to use, all the contingencies. I'll kind of give you an example here. The next slide is the example of a bid form. So this is one, these are two scopes of work, drywall and hardware. So you can see, we had five different bids in the drywall category. We scoped those out. And the hardware, we have three different bidders scoped those out, and then we present that in our GMP packet. This is, the next slide is the bidding process. This just shows kind of how we break it down into different scopes of work, everywhere from demo to mechanical, electrical, site clearing, and asphalt.
Sorry. Next slide. Yeah.
So those are the different scopes of work that we put out on the street, and then we get bids for each scope. Next slide. So the GMP approval, that will be, what we're bringing to you, to Sean, would be the first question, which is the high school. So that'll be all the work included at the high school. It'll include contingencies, the general conditions, our fees, the bonds, the permits, the insurances. So it's kind of like an all-inclusive package of the work at the high school. The GMP is twenty-three million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and seventeen. Like John was saying, this is four percent under budget, so it's a good first package. We do have, the elementary school is going on the street tomorrow, so that'll be out for bidding. We anticipate coming back at the next, at the February board meeting to do the same thing for the elementary school that we're doing here. So, yeah.
Maybe that's the next slide.
Projects that are remaining, Lean Elementary. We have tuck pointing district-wide, and then some miscellaneous improvements at the Intermediate and Middle Schools. So again, it's a good first day. And I know when Troy was here last time, maybe the time before, we showed the video. He shows the video, the fly-throughs. It like makes us super nervous because we sure hope that we can deliver on what the pictures are showing.
We didn't hear what he said. We were so distracted by the way he looked.
But the good news is, everything that he showed on that slide, we are able to deliver at four percent under budget. So again, we're hoping the rest of these projects come in as.
When we set forth on this mission, almost, well, this three years ago, it was January of 2020, we were intent on delivering exactly what we said we were going to do. When we finally decided this, we're going to do X, Y, and Z, we're going to go to the voters and ask them if they would be willing to help us with that. They were thankfully in the affirmative, yes. We are still in the same position to do exactly what we said we were going to do, with one caveat, to be under budget. And thus far, we are. So we're in very good shape through here and January of twenty-three. More to follow, but we're in a good spot.
I was awful nervous last year when, in 2020, after the COVID hit with all of the construction prices going up. And I didn't think we were going to, I didn't think we were going to make it. I did. The interior finishes that's on here with the package, the interior finishes, can you tell me what that entails? That's not furniture, the whole crack.
Correct. So that would be all the, like, new walls, new ceilings, new carpet. So we are, like, we have the, you know, the science suite, that's a total renovation there. The new, there's a, the media center's going to look brand new. It's going to get a whole new facelip with special ed going over there. And then even in the classroom, we're getting new ceilings, new lighting, new carpet. So that, all that made the cut in that. When you guys walk in the front door, that commons is going to, it's going to be a different place when you walk in.
That all made it.
Yeah. That all made it.
And we're still four percent under.
Right. It was, right. Yeah, absolutely. It was a concern of ours all along that everything would be up in the ceilings, or it would be math and science, and no one would ever see any of it. There is no way you're going to walk in a high school and not see it now.
Yep.
It is going to be right there for everyone to see. It is a really exciting.
Is there anything we can do about the weight room?
The good, I mean, the good news is, is like, our, I think we talked about this maybe a couple of meetings ago, but our GMP is, we're guaranteeing that we're going to do what's on the drawings. And then anything that's left over is, so maybe there's, maybe at the end is room for some.
I think that'll fall under another category.
Our other, our be-occurring referendum or something.
The next discussion that we're supposed to have later. But wow, this is exciting. Just four percent under is crazy good. That's.
There's a lot to be, but tuck pointing alone is over two and a half million dollars district-wide. So there's not only the elementary school, which is quite a good there, too. But it's a good start.
Yeah.
Good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. I mean, you guys make us look better, and people don't want to throw rocks at us as much.
Keep that in mind.
Wow.
It's very exciting. It will be very exciting to have all those changes.
Yeah. We'll see what happens with the elementary.
It'll look great when we go in.
Don't disappoint the elementary.
That'll be exciting, too.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll talk about the school board election.
School board election. We have a primary scheduled for February twenty-first, 2023. Then we have a general election scheduled for April fourth of 2023. The rule in state statute, if you have more than double the number of folks that are running for office or positions available to run for office, then you have to have a primary. So in this case, if you have one open spot, if you get beyond two, you have to have a primary. And we have three. And you'll see the three there, Steve Ossero, Del Stone, and Aaron Hosking. And the order of the day on the ballot is to vote for one, and the goal is to narrow it from three to two. And then obviously, at the general election, you narrow it from two to one. So that's all happening here in the next three-plus months.
Yeah. Please, get out and vote. Okay. Now we'll move on to our action items. And we're looking at a wide-area mower lease.
Okay. We are, we've run the shelf left of the existing. Okay, we are, we've, we've run the shelf left of the existing wide-area mower. We can either lease one to purchase it or you can outright purchase it. There are only two bids because those are the only two bids we could, could secure. And you'll see the supplier, the model, the purchase price and the lease price. You'll note that the purchase price is significantly higher on the left than the lease price. My recommendation would be to not purchase, my recommendation would be to lease.
Do we mean at least to purchase?
Yes, lease to purchase.
Is that green paint?
Green paint, yes.
That's why, it's so much more expensive.
We know who the leader is, don't we? Okay, all right.
This is a budgeted item in the transportation department, so it fits within that budget, it is not beyond that budget.
And that's the recommendation, I'm assuming, of the
That's the recommendation of Ryan Pease, Director of Transportation, who also does grounds.
His recommendation is to lease a John Deere?
No, the Toro.
Okay.
Right, the one on the right?
Yes. The one that's fifty-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-three versus seventy-five thousand?
Yeah.
Accurately described, yes.
We could hire a bunch of neighborhood kids for seventy-five thousand. Buy about twenty new push mowers?
I'm sure that'll look great.
Better buy more than that, there's a lot of mowing going on.
No, I don't, there is.
I'll make a motion that we do the lease-to-purchase price on the Toro thirty-seven HP.
I hope it makes it five years.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, motion made second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, there we go. Next up will be our calendar.
Well, I guess I jinxed it when I brought the draft version to you last month and said this is the draft calendar. We hope it stays the same, ACT has always been. And then literally, what was the next day, Josh?
Two days later.
Two days later, the ACT date was declared and it was right smack dab in the middle of spring break, on the 12th of March. All of our juniors are mandated to take the ACT and they can't take it from Florida. So we moved spring break up to the week of the 4th. So that's the only change in the calendar that you saw last month to this month. We're held hostage to that calendar unfortunately with the ACT.
Okay. Motion to accept this calendar for our next year?
I'll make a motion, we approve the presented 2023-2024 calendar.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Shar, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, there you go. And you're up, Brad.
All right, this is the time of year, January board meeting, where I am tasked with making a prediction, which is never a good idea in the world of special education, but it's a requirement here. So I'm gonna look into the crystal ball and talk about case management, staffing, and open enrollment programs and recommend some closures here. So I won't go through this word for word, but just so you have an idea of what the process is, using caseload document. In fact, there hasn't been really any guidance from DPI in almost twenty years. You can see the caseload formula was from 2001. That is recently, the link is inactive now on DPI's website. The word is that they are in development of another workload case management document. So there should be something to replace it soon and that's what will probably be used in the future. So it, it's a really difficult thing in terms of staffing in special education, kind of to look into the crystal ball here, right? We can look at enrollment trends, which we do, frequency, duration, intensity of, of individual IEPs, of currently enrolled students. The structure of the way services are delivered can have an impact on your staffing, whether you are staffing-supported classes with spec ed teachers and paraprofessionals, special programs where there might need to be a lower student-staff ratio, and then inclusive practices to where potentially being a really good spot to have a lot of services being delivered, not just by special ed staff, but by other, other staff and then, and then multi-tiered systems of support model that we use at, at all our buildings. So at any rate, we do need to look and determine whether there are spaces available in the program. You can kind of look down to this table and see that we're up to near our caseload maxims and current caseloads. As a part of this, there's always, throughout the years, you go throughout the year, typically you're going to see your further identifications for special education. And typically it doesn't match those who are disqualified or are not found eligible throughout the year. So the numbers tend to rise. So that's where you'll see those open enrollment recommendations on the end, that we would potentially be closed in '23 and '24 at the elementary, at the middle school, and then with speech language, which right now is sitting on really high numbers. And also our early childhood program, which has been a recommendation in the past. That's one that really hasn't been changed. We always keep a pretty good eye on those services to make sure that we have those available for kids that are identified through BRT. And then lastly, we contract related services in the areas of OT, PT, audiology, deaf, hard of hearing, blind visually impaired. And so open enrollment applications with IEPs that require contracted services would be denied in this model as well, in this proposal. So that sort of just safeguards our, you know, our obligation to take on additional contracted services, which do cost us money right out of the IDPA grant or general funding.
We have to complete those contracts pretty early in the spring for the, for the next school year, is that right?
Right, yeah, we contract through CISA for some of these and then we also contract kind of on a rolling basis with Cumberland Healthcare, for example, or the hospitals and clinics.
The shared services contract comes out every spring, we just talked about it last Friday at CISA, and we sign up for whatever services we need help with. At a price, of course, not free.
Yes. Okay, any other questions? Then I'll take a motion to
So
Take our open enrollment?
Just to clarify, so this is basically what we're gonna publish that we have as far as availability for open enrollment for students?
Not necessarily publish, but declare to the state of Wisconsin that these are our open enrollment limitations for folks that are gonna open enroll into the district. If we do not have these limitations in place in the month of January, you are obligated to receive every single one of them. And what Brad is in essence saying is, we don't have the staff or the resource to take any more folks than we've already got.
Yeah.
So, because the kids we have not only are abundant, but the needs have never been bigger. So it's getting pretty unmanageable.
Make a motion to approve the open enrollment recommendations set forth by Brad in this report for the 2023-2024 school year.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
I have, I have one other question. I'm, I'm just, I'm adding them up and they all, you know, most of them add up except for the intermediate school. I see forty-six caseload, two referrals, and one open spot that only equals forty-nine. I'm just wondering, because everything else kind of equals our caseload maximum.
Yeah, I'll have to take a look at that, that may have been when there was, you know, we may have more than two referrals.
Okay.
But that's a good catch, I'll take a look at it.
I'm just wondering, because everything else adds up or exceeds.
Yep.
The middle school, we're exceeding our caseload. Yay, middle school!
Each and language is over too, so. All right, we have the motion second, all of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay. Motion, Gary. All right, Josh and Jessica.
Okay, so our school district has an eleven-year curriculum adoption cycle. And so up for the '23-'24 school year is our 912 science. So before we go over this and Mr. Humble, Mr. Gould can answer any questions you might have. I can kind of walk you through the timeline that we've come through thus far. So in November, I met with Mr. Gould and the high school science team where we had reviewed what their needs were and what were their recommendations. And then in December, we brought the same document to the curriculum oversight committee where the 912 science teacher, teachers answered questions that anyone on our committee had questions about. At that point, it was approved. And so the next steps are to bring it to you, for you to look through and ask any questions that you might have from myself, Josh, or Mr. Humble here.
I think, Ryan, you should probably come and stand up here at the podium because, let's be honest, you're gonna answer these questions much better than Jess and I. The, go ahead.
Oh, so just remind me, this, this is like a ten-year cycle or something?
It's an eleven-year cycle.
So this is not consumables, but more of the things that you need for the, as much as you can tell.
This is what you got for the next eleven years.
Oh, yeah.
That's right, this is your chance to order stuff for the next
And the consumables that went along with this proposal, they, they do have in their budget already, they can cover those expenditures within their classroom budgets, which was talked about at the meeting.
So this is already within our budget to say yes?
Correct.
We have budgeted this expense, yes, this is a continual line item in our budget each and every year.
And with more good news, we did find out that some of the shipping estimates were going to be lower than we anticipated as well.
Oh, yay, because I looked at that and went, wow, sir!
Yeah, we even got better news just this past week. Mr. Enslin came down just giddy.
So the big bio-rap one, you see there's like seventeen different items. It is, I'm looking at his new quote, it's almost three thousand dollars less than what we originally thought it was gonna be, which is good.
Just for shipping or for the order?
For the order, for the quote.
Nice.
Which is good, because then we got some other items that we found different. Like the one that we found different was on the top, one, the aquaponic system. We found a better system that entails more and is more adequate to more classes. That's a little more expensive, so we're very close to being able to go with the better version of, instead of just piecing it together on our own, which is a lot better, for us, it'd be a lot better for the students.
The basic philosophy these guys adopted in working in all this equipment and curriculum is their belief, and I agree with them, is these kids learn best when they're doing it, when they're doing it via labs and experiments and, and seeing the colors change and the, the weights change. These guys all put a heavy emphasis on daily lab participation. I think the kids have really bought into it in all of our science classes and it's, it's, it's a really good thing. And plus you add in new classrooms here in two years.
It's kind of lines up nice.
It's, it's gonna be a great
To have new equipment with the new classrooms. I had to look up what an autoclave was.
Me too.
Like, that's a thirteen thousand dollar purchase, what is that?
I think the last one was bought when Joe was probably in high school.
And ours has just now become a sinker, you know, it's just an anchor basically and it's, yeah, it's necessary to have it.
That's right, I forgot Shar's kid tried to burn it or something, right? Was that the, was that the piece of machinery that started on fire?
Oh, boy!
Why am I not surprised?
Started on fire.
Blast her off, see her year, yay! Going out with a bang!
Yep.
Can you tell me what gel imaging is?
Um, so you've probably seen like NCIS or CSI or any of that where you see, like, it's for DNA fingerprinting to be able to section out different lengths and sizes of proteins, where you see the picture of, hey, this band matches up with this band to figure out if it's a suspect or of a, of a crime scene. We had one, I think Paul mentioned that it was bought, can't remember, 2002, I think was the last one, and that it's obsolete, it doesn't work very well. We have to hook up to computers and it takes a picture and you get not, you can hardly see anything half the time. Where the new one is, it has a program in it that will save it and then we can upload it right to our TVs versus trying to hope that it works. Which, I mean, yeah, it's, they aren't cheap, but they're, and that's middle-of-the-road type of imaging that we're looking at there compared to what, what we could, you know, what, what's out there, I guess you could say.
Yeah, just a lot, a lot more projects that the kids can do now
Yeah.
That are practical and things that involve like their, their phones and stuff that they can do out in the real world. And if they're gonna be on them, they should be on them for good learning purposes anyway, so.
One, one other focus with these guys is we're, we're gonna be purchasing carts and a lot of this equipment, we're making portables rather than buying two sets of things. We're buying singular sets and being able to transport them from room to room and they all get along well, so it'll work out good.
They can share, huh?
They collaborate well, I'm very proud of them.
It'll be a lot easier now with the new setup, when the referendum piece gets done and the new project comes in, it'll be a nice addition.
Yeah.
All right, well, I make a motion that we approve the science curriculum order.
I'll second it. Joe, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Yeah, I just want to tell you, thanks for the work that you guys did, that it's a lot. And you guys came well-prepared to the curriculum meeting for this and you all knew exactly what you needed and what is gonna work for your classrooms. And I know this is a, it's a crap ton of work here, so thanks.
It took, yeah, our PLC, that helped having that Wednesdays to be able to do that, handle that. Because that was pretty much every Wednesday until now.
And I know, I know you guys are working on it right up until, like, even now, so thank you for all the work that you've done for that.
Thank you.
I'd like the DPI to begin using science scores on the state report card too, right?
And up next is K8 science, correct?
Correct.
So that process will start soon.
There we go.
Next steps of, of this process is, once you approve it, which you have, Mrs. Hulk at the intermediate school office, she will put together a purchase order and then after July 1st, that's when the purchases will be made and they should start coming pretty quick after that.
Yay, it's exciting.
Good, good. Next is the best, donations to the district.
Okay, we have a few. We have a donation to the school farm from Brian Elkin on behalf of Eljo Memorial Golf Tournament for the donation of six hundred and ten dollars to the school farm orchard in memory of Janet and Irv Elkin. And we have a thank you to Tim Chezeth for his donation to the school farm in memory of Ralph Chezeth. A school farm donation anonymous in the sum of two thousand, five hundred dollars. And then an angel fund donation by Dan and Carol Smith of two hundred dollars. Another donation to the middle school angel fund from Clark and Mitzi Anderson in the sum of one hundred dollars. And that is it.
Absolutely astounding.
Well, our school farm was popular apparently last month, so that's awesome. I think people want to start to see things happening over there so much.
Well, we had a, well, we need to stop snowing first. We actually just met on school farm and house building, so you're gonna see an update in the coming months. We're simply waiting on some answers in regards to what it's gonna look like and we need support from city and electric company and surveying in order to give you the answers that you need. So by the end of the school year, you're gonna see a whole lot more information, very exciting.
It is.
I have a question about the angel fund. Is it possible to get like a report at some point about how much money we go through or how much each school building? And, and maybe even, I mean, I feel like I could think of what we use it for, but maybe just a kind of a list of
Yes, we, we coded in, in to four different departments, four different buildings, so yes, it's easy to do that. I don't want to speak on behalf of finance, but there you go.
I think we do that with our budget, don't we, when we, when we go through our line item budget, don't we go through that?
Well, what, what we could provide from the business office is literally how much money's been taken in and how much has been spent. And then we can talk about how it's been used, because it happens right here. These folks receive these requests oftentimes through people's services via kid. And it happens, and it happens because of the generosity of our community in so many ways.
I, I think it'd be great for the public to have that, just to have that knowledge also though, to know, you know, how much we go through and what is spent on.
Yes.
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion with great thanks to accept the donations to the district from all the really wonderful people and the great mission that we have.
And a second?
I'll second that, yes, many thanks.
Yes.
So appreciate it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go, give them a round of applause. Next, we have our personnel items.
Okay, we have new employment and extracurricular contracts for Travis Bauermeister as a van driver, Matthew Carey, auditorium director, Lizzie Grohovik for elementary school para, Sandy Johnson, transportation office para, Elaine Kahler for elementary school para, Brittany Schwach, assistant director for Clubhouse Childcare, Jordan Wiesner, clubhouse lead teacher. We have reassignments for Haley Tyberg from kindergarten to special ed para, Mary Ziegler from 4KK Montessori over to IS, academic and behavior support. Resignation from Mackenzie Anderson for clubhouse lead teacher. I'm gonna skip past Luann, I'm gonna come back to her, and a termination for Ashley Pernard for clubhouse lead teacher. The retirement is for 4K para, Luann Pahatchek. I asked Luann a couple of questions and here's what Luann had to say and then Paula, you can chime in too if you'd like. Asked her how many years she's been in education. She said for over thirty. Asked her how many years in AMRI, and the answer is also over thirty. So all of her professional life and education was spent here. "I will miss spending my days working with kids. I have truly enjoyed seeing them every day. I enjoy seeing past students of all ages in the community when they come up and talk to me about their memories of the time they spent with me as their para educator. And lastly, what are you gonna do in retirement? I am looking forward to spending time with my family and friends, traveling and quilting." And if you wanted to say anything, Paula.
I just wanna add that we just really appreciate all the hard work that Luann has brought to our building. And over the, the years, I fortunately have been able to work with her this school year, and, but she's been here many more. And she's just gonna be missed, and I know that her 4K team has just been really glad to have her all the years that they've had her, so they're going to miss her as well. So we just thank Luann a lot for all the hard work.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
She's been helping with those little kids for a long time. My, some of my kids had her, and she was fabulous.
Boots and coats.
Yep. Yep, it's a busy place.
Yes, it is. I need a motion to accept the personnel items.
Move, move to accept the personnel action items.
All right, Char, and a second?
Second.
Dale, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? There we go. We have no need for closed?
No, sir.
So we'll look for adjournment.
So moved.
Aaron, second?
Second.
Char, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? We're done. And I think...